Hey, how are you?
So now we're gonna start about one minute. Alright, as we call the meeting to order, this is for our budget. I'm hearing, proceeding to finalize the budget. The first issue to be discussed, and I will remind you that this only the villages to be discussing in the budget during this meeting. First issue to be discussed is the proposed final village. Madam Clerk? Or Mr. Mullins?
The proposed final village is four point three eight seven nine mils. And the City of Stark's proposed final military of four point three eight seven nine mils is a five point three zero seven percent increase over the rollback rate of four point one six six nine mils.
And this maintains the same rate as we had as last year. Correct? Do we have any comments from the public regarding the proposed final village rate? Hearing none, do we have any comments from the commission regarding this proposed final village? Alright, at this time I will entertain a vote to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash forty eight, setting the final village as four point three eight seven nine mils. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Milner, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Nugent, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five up. Alright, next we have the proposed final budget. Mr. Mullins?
The proposed final budget is composed of the following expenditures and reserve totals. General fund, eight million five hundred ninety thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Special revenue funds, one million eight hundred eighty eight thousand nine six hundred ninety seven dollars. Enterprise funds, forty three million six hundred twenty three thousand nine hundred thirty seven dollars. Total approved budget of fifty four million ninety five thousand two hundred sixty two dollars. The proposed final budget, uh, total operating expenses are two twenty four point nine percent more than last year's total operating expenses.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public regarding the final proposed budget? Hearing none, do we have any comments from the commission regarding the final budget? No comments, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash forty nine, which will adopt the final budget can for twenty twenty six, consisting of the following expenditures of, as Mr. Mullins already stated, eight million five hundred ninety thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars. Special revenues, one million eight hundred eighty thousand six hundred and ninety seven dollars. Enterprise funds of forty three million six hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. For a total approved budget of fifty four million ninety five thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars. Anyone wanting to make that motion at this time?
Yes, ma'am. I move that, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine be approved.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mortimer, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Nugent, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five up. Alright, that concludes our budget review.
There's one other.
If you could please silence your opponent. It's only a five dollar card.
Before we begin the official meeting in the City of Stark City Commission, there will be a time of voluntary prayer and a pledge of allegiance. If you believe to do so or ask to stand, and Commissioner Nugent will lead us in prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, as we call the meeting to order, we have a long meeting this evening. We have a swearing in of Ms. Temple Overstreet and Ms. Chrissy Thompson, who were newly elected to their offices. And Ms. Mortimer will be getting sworn in again, and she will be serving another term. So, at this time, you know, I think we're gonna begin with Judge Davis, with Commissioner Mortimer and Commissioner Overstreet.
Aye. And four. Yes, four. Do you solemnly swear or affirm? I solemnly swear and affirm. That I am due. That I will protect. Protect. And defend. And defend. The Constitution. The Constitution. And government. And government. Of the United States. Of the United States. And of the state of Oregon. And of the state of Oregon. That I am duly qualified. That I am duly qualified. To hold office. To hold office. Under the Constitution. Under the Constitution. Of the state. Of the state. And that I will well. And that I will well. And faithfully perform. And faithfully perform. The duties of. The duties of. City commission. City commission. On which. On which. I am now. I am now. About to. So help me God. Don't stand behind this server. Mr. Lecter? You're right, always. So, Mr., I'm gonna ask you to place your left hand on the bottom of your right hand. Left hand on the bottom. Right hand on the top. Repeat after me, is it aye? Temple Overstreet? Do you solemnly swear or affirm? Swear that I am. That I was informed. Protect. And defend. The Constitution. And government. Of the United States. And of the state of Oregon. That I am duly qualified. To hold office. Under the Constitution. Of the state. And that I will well. And faithfully perform. The duties of. City commission. On which. I am now. About to. So help me God.
Yes, I hear better.
Yes, ma'am. For consti- place left on the bottom, repeat after me, is it aye? This is. Do you solemnly swear or affirm? Swear or affirm. That I will. Protect. And defend. The Constitution. And government. Of the United States. And of the state of Oregon. That I am duly qualified. To hold office. Under the Constitution. Of the state. And that I will well. And faithfully perform. The duties of. City commission. On which. I am now. I am now. About to. About to.
As him tonight, as he is rotating off of the board, Ms. Overstreet's coming in. But I just wanna say, look out Scott, um, obviously, if anybody's from Stark, they know that Scott has been a fixture in this community as his, his family, as respected business owners and operators in our town forever. And I just want to say that, you know, I, um, I admire Scott's wisdom and the encouragement that he's given me since I've been on the commission, and just his composure. Scott always has a good, you know, steady composure. Um, he carries himself professionally in everything he does, and he will surely be missed. Obviously, we're happy to have our, our newly elected officials, but I just want him to know that it means a lot to have served with you and all of us together. So, this is your plaque, sir. I'm sorry. So, this is presented to Scott Roberts in recognition of and appreciation for four years of outstanding service, Stark City Commission. Presented this day, September twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Alright, as the meeting's back to order, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the agenda be approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mortimer, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Nugent. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five up. Alright, that takes us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Milner, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Nugent. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five up. Alright, I don't see any old business or emergency items. That brings us to number nine, citizen requests. The City of Stark welcomes you to this meeting. This time is set aside for our citizens and general public to address the city commission. This is not a question or answer time, it is not a political forum, nor is it a time for personal accusations or derogatory remarks to or about city personnel. If you would like to address the commission, please complete a form, come to the podium when you are called, and speak into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please also limit your comments to not more than three minutes, your participation is welcome. At this time, I have one from Mr. Thomas Smith, do we have any other citizen requests? Okay, thank you. There's a form around the table in the back, sir, and, uh, you can fill it out while Mr. Smith is making his presentation.
Hi, sir. Yes, sir. My. My name is Thomas Smith, I'm a resident of, uh, East End. I've been a resident of private county on my life. And I live here, and, uh, they just have a real estate office here, so I feel good. I still dabble a little bit in the commercial world, so. And I, I have a listing on three oh one, on three oh one north. Three twenty, that's great. Is that North Temple? Thirteen, thirteen, twelve, ten? Thirteen, one. Okay, thirteen, thirteen, one. And, uh, we were, uh, next to the best western, just north of the best western. This property for years was owned by Eldon Cardy, most of y'all probably remember him, he had a used car on it. His three daughters now own the property in there from him. And they all live up in Atlanta, Georgia area, so that's, that's why they can't be here tonight, that's why I'm representing them. But, the, the, the early part of April, it's about like April third, I think it was. I went down to check on the property, when I got down there, I noticed that the power lines, the electric buildings on the, on the city power, power pole, had been ripped off. Power pole and off, side of the building, meter box, pulled off as well. And we're laying there in the, uh, parking lot. And, uh, so I immediately came down to City Hall and reported it. And, uh, told them they would, uh, check on it and get back to me. Well, they didn't get back to me, I came back down here and, uh, they said, uh, well, we're not responsible for the garbage. We're responsible for the garbage, got the area, pulled it in, and then we turned, for to, uh, to the company. And, uh, the truck, we called for the, uh, power line, you know, but they got hooked in, delivered it, stopped, and just kept going. Meter box off the side of the building, you know, off the pole, it's pulling the, uh, line. And, uh, I got that, I, I saw that, I hit the road right there. I gave to, uh, here at City Hall. And, uh, they kept saying, now, now our responsibility is to be the garbage. Well, I said, well, that's true, you know, they're your contractors, and you make the pay for it. They said, well, they checked it. I checked back, and said they have contacted garbage people, and said they have cameras on all their trucks, and they have checked films, and none of, none of their trucks did this. Well, but it seemed like y'all did it. I was just looking down from the other side. Well, it's what they had, a day later, I was down at the property, and, uh, Sam Patel, most of you probably know him, came walking over, good friend of mine, with the garbage. And my daughter, she's not.
Yes, sir, but we need to hear the rest of them, sir.
She said, the daughter, who is, uh, this, you know, now owns, you know, the garbage. She, she happened to be in her office that morning when the, uh, all this happened. She heard this motion, big bang, and came off the side of the building. She looked out, and, uh, there's a city garbage truck, and it was driveway, it was parking lot, about a building. Got electrical wires wrapped all around it, and, uh, and they just, they pulled right on out of the property, and down and left. Didn't go to anybody that was, you know, probably seen it, or called, anybody in the authorities that, that were, that were nearby. And, uh, she, she heard the noise, she heard the bang, and totally gone through it. Her name is Missy Patel. She'd be willing to go to court, and that's why, she heard this loud noise, looked over, saw the garbage truck, and that wire wrapped all around it. And it was a loaded vehicle, it was anywhere inside.
Did she describe the?
Garbage truck.
Color, size, uh, insignias, anything?
All that. Current garbage truck, that, that took in garbage, and it's been a garbage.
Alright. If, um, if you could give me a little bit to dig into it, I will have conversation with Mr. Walker and Mr. Mullins. And then we'll proceed about speaking with Matt Patel, to see if she's really willing to make this one statement. Do you have an estimate of the damages, does anybody?
Yeah, we would have done the, you know, somebody has done some media, like, you know, can it, but then there was a monument, like, that was made, and so. And of course, with no electricity, no water, they went down, you know, I believe, that's about, 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 and, 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 six, six months of.
Right. And if you can get that together, but the actual repairs.
I have not, not, I have one, one electrician up there, that's gonna, that's gonna call the, the, the.
Could you do that for me? Alright, we'll work on it, I promise. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, don't let me forget to follow up on that.
Yes, sir. Sure.
Alright, Mr. Larry Crocker, Crocker, disaster relief, American Health Services,災民救護隊, Robber Recovery County.
Thank you for coming up. Thank you very much, uh, for letting me come up here and champion this minute. Again, Larry Crocker, I'm with Meridian Healthcare. Uh, many of you may be familiar with Meridian, we've been around for a long, long time. I'm here specifically, though, with the disaster relief team. And it, it was a, a federal program that was instituted, and we got started on it earlier this year. The, with the administration change, as you all know, a lot of the federal programs were either paused or halted altogether. Uh, and it just got re-instituted here just a few weeks ago. It is specifically designed to help people who survive or who are still recovering from Hurricane Belene or the, uh, the barrage of storms that we had last year. And, uh, we have different kinds of resources that we can offer to help build with the recovery. Uh, obviously, Bradford County Stark is a, a, a big part of the territory, the area that we cover to serve the community. So, uh, because the program had been stopped and is now re-going, re, uh, reworking again, I wanted to come and just kind of make a public announcement, let you guys know that we're back in town specifically for disaster recovery. And here to offer services to anybody in the Stark community and surrounding area. Uh, I have suppliers, is it appropriate for me to? Yes, sir. I'll brief you guys, and, uh, I'll just give it to you, take one, two, three.
Is your contact information, Mr. Mayor?
The, uh, I'll be happy to give you my direct contact. I also just did for introduction back there, I have Ms. Carla Garcia. She offices here in Stark, and she's with our mobile response team, so, for, um, crisis, mental health, or substance abuse crisis situations. Uh, her team is available to, uh, come on scene. I know that they work with law enforcement in many cases, uh, so that they can come on scene and de-escalate a, uh, mental health or substance abuse crisis situation. Hopefully to be able to prevent Baker Act or Martin Act or something like that. Um, but, uh, again, this was just an opportunity, uh, we wanted to try to make as many people known as possible that they were, uh, back here specifically helping with the disaster recovery, so, uh, we're, we're.
Can, can you make sure our newly elected, uh, Liz Horton, uh, gives one of his.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any other comment cards? Alright, hearing none, moving on to the city manager report.
First, I have Lynn come up and present this.
Alright, we got ten A site plan approved, so what's your, your holding, L S C?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that's Kevin, trying to land. What you have before you is the project on the land, and you guys just continue to annex the fourth acre. Uh, a pre-caps concrete plant, directed down to three acres of concrete plant off of the hundred and twenty, direct across from the school. Uh, staff has reviewed the site plan, uh, utility, all heads for the new site plan. It is sufficient without the diamond standards. If you have any questions, I am here at the app, Kevin's house.
Alright, can you leave a photo of that from us? Okay. Alright. Let's, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan, and then we can have a discussion after we get.
So moving.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Milner, seconded by Commissioner Nugent. Do we have any discussion by the commission? Okay?
Yes, sir.
My opinion is already blessed, and it's been expanded, that's all we need to do. Existing concrete plant is a separate entity altogether. Uh, this is a unique ability for them to be able to purchase the concrete directly across the street, and distribute it straight from their pre-caps plant. It's a, it's gonna be a win-win, because our city of Bill, they apply me equally, such as water. It requires a lot of water at that type of plant, and they'll be able to get the concrete directly across the street, or adjacent parcel.
Yeah, and like Lynn said, it was, it's probably pre-caps concrete, or substance of concrete, like your manhole inlets, just, they got a lot of different things there, but that's what that's for.
Our new bridge? Yep. All that was Robert pre-caps concrete.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, from my simple concrete understanding mind, so, it's not gonna be one of those places where those big trucks that turn, uh, is that what, is that, they're gonna be doing, is that what, cause those are gonna be, is this across from the school? Right? Is, is that the kind of.
Uh, so, these types of facilities are all, you're not gonna have any, like the one we have downtown?
Yeah.
You're not gonna have, you're not gonna have, if there is anything, it's not gonna be dust, that we're casting in the school.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else? Any public comment on the concrete plant? Alright, hearing none, we've had a motion and a second, no further discussion, all those.
Wait, let me ask one other question. So, when, uh, when we, uh, if we, if this is approved, when do they actually start going, what's the next step to them to?
You are the very beginning process, after we do the review.
Okay, right.
So, the civils are first, and then we'll have architectural engineering, uh, what is actually being built to be there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that mean that, uh, now over Stark, this is the very first step, because there's a lot of things. Is it, need rezone it, is it already zoned to do what it's doing now?
When you annex in land, this was already zoned industrial, the fourteen acres to gain access to it, it will be contiguous, it will automatically go to the same industrial zone.
Which, which is?
Which we're taking, that's it.
Any further questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes five up.
Alright, ten B, the, these, these parts, the, uh, ten B appointments, F M P A, F N D A, F G U, those require, those by admission, which has three minutes, uh, as the ultimate possible priority, and, um, as so appropriate, you want to, we will serve on, on the board, all of them, or, or ahead of there.
So, I've attended some meetings with you, um, as you stated, with F M P A, you're the seat holder on that. Do any of the other commissioners have an interest in taking a formal role under F M P A? Yes, ma'am?
So, so, um, what, the, this, this is just the alternate, in case you can't attend the meeting, basically, right?
Correct.
And, and, and they all, do they all meet, uh, or we're just, are we just going one week on, and then?
I would just want to talk about the other one.
So, F M P A meets once, once a month?
Yep, correct.
And it all begins in Orlando? Okay, and, and then they have the annual conference once a year?
Correct.
F M P A is quarterly, and.
Quarterly?
Yep, so is F G U.
Okay, and is it usually, um, in the central way as well?
F G U is mainly online, they're engaged.
Oh, okay.
They're online, F M P A depends on, for instance, January, December, um, they'll be running it at the center, at the busy sectors, and, um, at annual, and.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a desire to serve, um?
Um, well, I wanted to open up to the team first, I wasn't gonna cherry pick or anything without fun, or on the team, but, but, um, if, if somebody has an express.
But, um, if, if somebody hasn't expressed interest or a bit of knowledge in that field already, that way they can keep us in the loop. Um, and I think that that would be appropriate. So that's why I'm kinda hoping to help to see, um, people with experience or interest in this. So, if one of those three, I'm opening the table for now the time to speak up if you haven't expressed interest in one of them.
Okay. I'm gonna speak up. Um, I would, I would like to, um, be, um, a point of the alternate for FMPA because it's a quarterly meeting and I don't need, sure, or planning council, which is a monthly meeting. And I don't wanna give too much to my, 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 so, I, I would, I would, uh, put my name ahead for FMBA.
Okay. Any other commissioners have an interest in FMBA? Just with Commissioner Mortimer, any resident? Well, let's take that one first then, since you did that first and leave your vote for, um, the nomination and the second.
I was gonna, just for the, the alternate for FMBA, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Nugent. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Commissioner Mortimer being the alternate for FMBA? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five votes.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
So, moving on, let's assess the FMBA. Does anybody have an interest there? Any interest?
I'm, I'm interested, so.
I, I'll second that nomination.
We have a motion and a second to push me in whether. Do we have any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five votes. Last one, that leaves us FGU, which is a quarterly meeting.
What?
Sorry.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. I thought FMBA was, was quarterly.
Yeah, those two are.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay. So FGU, the quarterly meeting, as an alternate?
I would be involved.
You recommend Bob? Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll second that. Do we have? I'm sorry. Would anybody want to second that? Motion by Commissioner Nugent?
Did Bob want it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second.
Y'all pushed me in, you pushed me in.
Well, I am.
So we have a, a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So you have that appointment, sir. Okay. So, the.
Please, sir. One more problem.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I've, we've, uh, in passing, I'll get FMPA, but these are for the alternate, but I would strongly recommend, uh, recommend that you can still go down with these things. You can still even be able to commit, um, FMBA that I serve in the community. So, even though you're not an alternate or voter, I would strongly suggest you can always, always, and I'm sure all the rest of the, to, to, I'll bring on.
If you get some attention, if you still participate, you just, and I highly encourage to.
Yeah.
All right. That brings us to Tennessee, and that's the appointment to the TDC Board. And, um, I know previously, well, Commissioner Roberts has served on it because of his, you know, intimate relationship with business community and everything else, and then as mayor also, um, it's my recommendation that I basically fill in in that role like Commissioner Roberts was and be part of that board, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I nominate, uh, you as the TDC Board Representative.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
So that changes.
Potentially, I mean, it could, but I mean, we can do it for this term.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five votes. All right. That brings us to eleven A, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, creating and establishing the Capital Improvement Plan. This is the second reading, which we.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mullins of the City, uh, City Commission of City of Stark, Florida, creating chapter eighty-two, article six, sections eighty-two dash three hundred and thirty-nine through eighty-two dash three hundred and forty-six, entitled Capital Improvement Plan, establishing requirements of capital improvement plan and capital improvement plan budget, providing for definitions, establishing a process for review, amendment, adoption, and appropriation of the city commission, providing for progress report on current capital improvement projects to be provided to the city commission, adopting in the twenty-four six, twenty thirty, five-year capital improvement program, annual update, provided for legislative findings, providing for sustainability, providing for exclusion from the competition, and providing for effective, they, the court of motions passed, number twenty-four-five dash fifteen, on its reading, entitled.
Okay. You have heard the second reading of the ordinance. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve. So, Mr. Mayor. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Milner. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Mortimer. Do we have any further discussion by the commission? Hearing done. Do we have any public comment? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five votes. All right. We have no quasi judicial hearings listed. City Attorney Report.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing is just a reminder, December fourth, ethics presentation, so you get your four-year, your four-hour certificate in and, uh, and that'll commence at four o'clock in the office.
All right. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Nugent?
What I have is, um, the city's attorney. Where's that at? I, I think it's either, um, St. Augustine or it's Friday, I can't remember.
That'll be in the November? October, October twenty?
October.
It's St. Augustine, no, no, they got a. All right. Commissioner Milner?
Um, speaking of the terms and layers, sir, uh, we know that, uh, Commissioner-elect, Ove Street, uh, is gonna be going on a wonderful trip until November. Uh, and I know we don't vote on the mayor until the first, uh, meeting in November, that's fine. I mean, October. But I think she should have an opportunity to be able to vote. But in order to do that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just, I'm not asking for a vote, but as we come up to the first meeting in October, I, I would hope that maybe you would consider remaining the mayor until Ms. Timmer comes back in November. And that way, all five commissioners get to vote on the mayor. Just, just a thought. That would be up to the pleasure of the commissioners, right? So.
Do we need a motion, uh, Mr. Attorney? To change the.
Like a first meeting.
Oh, okay.
All right. So we'll look forward to that process.
That's it.
Until Ms. Ove Street can be back to us and we have the full commission. Okay?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Commissioner Roberts?
Uh, actually, there's sort of one thing I was gonna say, the commissioner would, uh, take in consideration for the, for the mayor, so, I'm not, I'm not gonna be, uh, supportive of that, and I was gonna bring that up with y'all's approval, maybe to do that. I wanna say how much I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be here with City of Stark. Uh, this is not about me, it's about the pleasure that this community gave me to serve here. Uh, this community has been, I have been so blessed by this community and so blessed to have sat up here for four years. And, uh, good or bad, it was, uh, it's something that I did from the heart. I don't think you get into something like this unless you really have a love for what you're gonna do and serve. Those who are served, uh, and sometimes it's not just in elected, but in nonprofits too. I mean, people have their hearts and things. And, uh, it's something that I will take with me, the friendships that I've made, uh, the friendships that I have strengthened since I've been here, the people that I've met. I will say that the City of Stark has some finest people looking for. And, uh, you know, it's hard to get two people to agree on things when you've got five of us and a bunch of people with input. I, I commend this commission for doing the best they can. That's what any commission can do. Uh, sometimes things don't come out like you want them, being everybody. You know, I said this even before I started serving, uh, I had the, uh, pleasure, opportunity, my, my father was in politics, and so I grew up around it. I watched how people reacted, I watched how he reacted, and I took a lot from him. Uh, but I learned early on, anybody in my business, uh, ventures here in this town, you know, when you bring something before a board, you may be forty-nine percent one way and fifty-one the other. A lot of times when you vote one way, it's not that you one hundred percent believe that's the way it should be. It's the best you could do based on the information that you have. So, sometimes, you know, people would come up to you, and you, I see your point, but if there's other points, other sides, and sometimes you're not one hundred percent the way you voted, but you're, you're a hundred percent convicted to go one way. And that's what I try to do here. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with everybody here. Uh, I will still be in this community, I accord myself in this community, uh, because they accord theirself in me, and I've been successful here, not because of anything I've done, but because of the people in this town. So, it's been a very, very high honor to sit up here. Uh, and I could talk for the rest of the night, but it wouldn't cover, uh, what I feel about having to serve up here, the people I've met, and, uh, what we've accomplished up here. I feel like we've done a lot, and there's still a lot. I said, got on my soapbox, so they could meet there two ago. You know, it's hard to serve up here. Sometimes you've got a lot of things you've got to do, and you gotta take, take the good with the bad sometimes up here. So, it, it, uh, my wife's not here, she was here earlier. I certainly blessed to have her, but it was the few nights I came home after meetings, I, I'm not sure, she had to listen to me. So, uh, that's probably true with all of our spouses, you know? They got to listen to us till we get home, but she was always supportive of me, and my family has always supported me. But, again, I thank the City of Stark, thank the citizens, thank y'all for this opportunity to, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, Commissioner Roberts for, uh, allowing me the credit of the city by you and learning from you, and, uh, the wisdom and integrity that you've shown, uh, these last four years is, is very much appreciated. And, um, as the mayor stated when he was doing the flat, your cool, calm demeanor is, is contagious, because there have been, you know, times that, you know, sometimes I have to get a little bit heated and just look over and you're so calm, and it kinda allowed me to exhale. So, thank you, Scott, for being, um, a great colleague, uh, and all the things that you've done for the city and the vision that you've shared, and, and we know that you're gonna continue to, um, serve us just in a different capacity. And, and when you say blessed, blessed is, is beyond measure, and we're so grateful, I'm grateful, to have, um, have you, call you a friend. So, thank you.
Again, thank you, Commissioner Roberts, as we stated before, just your, your collectiveness and your demeanor. And that's how we should do business up here as a board, right? My Commissioner Mortimer said, you know, when it comes to, you get your feelings, we're passionate about everything, but when we are doing the city's business, we're doing it as a board, we are professional at the end of the day, and that's how, at least from, from my standpoint, we should always conduct ourselves that way, because we are to be the example for the people we can't be acting out like, you know, you see on social media and stuff like that. So, thank you for being that example here, um, because we haven't always agreed on everything, and we have taken on some, uh, very contentious, daunting tasks, um, just in the three years that I've been here, and we're gonna take on more. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, like you said, it's all for the City of Stark, and we do the best that we can for the greater benefit of people. So, um, as we talk about that, again, thank you for your service. Um, you're not gonna go away. You're still gonna be, you know, active, and you're still gonna be around, and, and we're gonna be here for you. So, I'm gonna be talking about, talk about doing good business and talk about doing for the City of Stark. Um, that brings me to my final point, and I want to, you know, speak with Mr. Walker about this as I bring this up, is we need to look at having a charter review committee. Um, we have a lot of antiquated language in our charter. Um, we have tasks that may not be covered as they should or how they're delineated, but what do we need to do to get our charter up to date? And what does that look like?
My recommendation would be to panel a charter review commission that gives various perspectives throughout the community, citizens that might be interested in putting out the word that we're engaging in charter revision, and we have a charter revision commission that does the actual work, they meet once a month or every other week, whatever schedule they determine they want to work on, usually just once a month, because they'll give me instruction. Typically, what I've experienced is that I bring a set of charters for, uh, cities around the state of Florida of light populace, a city that has utility systems, and it's a fire department would be high on the list of examples. And then, and the charters that have been revised in the last five years or so. So those are the criteria. I'll bring a set of those charters to the, to the members of the commission and say, okay, here's what we've got, our existing charter, here's what the current charter is and, and, uh, has been revised, and then do kind of an explanation of what chapter one sixty-six does and who more powers and why these charters have changed over time. And, uh, of course, ours is from nineteen to nineteen twenties, and you had in those days delineate specifically what powers the city had, and that was done away with with chapter one sixty, one sixty-six. So, we would be looking at that process and then take the majority vote of that commission, bring it to you as a advisory committee, and then you can take whatever information that you determine is reasonable collectively, pass an ordinance to place that on the ballot. So it's not a short process.
Right.
It's a fairly long procedure that you go through, but in my view, the community has to have some buy-in. They have to say, look, this is what we wanna do, we wanna not change it, change it in this manner, and then, uh, make a determination that we voted our electors.
So, what was the makeup of that commission typically look like?
I, I think, um, my experience has been you might have a couple of business owners in the, in the community, certain citizens that live in the city, and, you know, some residents, and, uh, and they look at that sort of makeup. Usually it's five to seven, uh, members in the community, and, uh, my suggestion is that each of the commissioners maybe pick a person to, to see if they might be interested in, and then collectively, well, have a, a resolution, calling the charter review commission and empower them.
So, any of those seats, how would that work? Would any of the commissioners need to sit on that?
No. Typically, we just have.
Staff? How about any of our staff?
Right. They have to meet in public, they have to have minutes.
Yes, this is.
Typically, um, you have your city clerk who'll be involved in it, because she's keeping the minutes, um, and should be involved in it, and, uh, Drew wants to be involved in it as well, and that's, that's typically.
All right. So, based on what you're telling me and everything else, then I would, um, my challenge to my fellow commissioners is when we reconvene, um, we can do it under my comments again next time, is if you could come back with two recommendations, um, we'll look to have Bob, the seven, um, members on that, but if you could.
I'm sorry, does that include the?
Well, yeah. So, let's look at it this way. Right. So if each of you could have a recommendation of somebody from your district, that would be good, and then have a recommendation of a staff member. Okay? And then, um, depending on, look, and some of our districts don't have a lot of commercial makeup, so if you have a recommendation for a business member, that can be said, too. We're wrong about that if that's not.
Question, uh, could we, besides citizens, like, ask the, the cities if they have anybody, like, when we get for, um, do some other. Question, could we, besides citizens, like, ask them, I mean, the cities, if they have anybody, like, when we did, or did some other research in the past, I'm surprised, you might could look, see if they had these specialty people, could you actually sit in with this committee and guide them in the right direction, because they've got some of these people you're gonna get, have never done this kind of stuff before, they have no clue, not because they don't, it's just because they don't do that, so if they were there to give guidance, you know, if they really had someone, we'd check in.
Somebody that's been on charter review committee or something like that.
Exactly, yes.
Or had experience, and that's a possibility too, but I'm looking for input, so this isn't all, and my thing's open floor, as to what do you guys think about my recommendation at this time?
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott, you first, you first.
The numbers, I'm not sure, was the right number, is the right number, you don't want too many, don't, to, to, five or seven, I'm sure that's good, but, you know, the title, like, Commissioner said, it's not somebody from the league, I would think it's important to be, any major company, is, it definitely is, get layout of parameters. And that's the one, what Commissioner said, so I think that's all your recommendations, but I think that's all I can do. Is, is it, it's gonna be a, a long piece of time.
Well, I mean, we're looking at a year process, right? Well, if, if nothing else, we're looking at a six to eight month process, because then we have to have everything in order, basically, to come around for next election next year, so.
And if, if you got.
And we should have it then, I'm sorry, I mean, but I feel like we should have it then, because we're gonna have a governor's race, we'll have a better turnout, and our citizens, and everything else, and that's just a, a good, you know, plan of attack that I think we're gonna have for that. Yes, sir. We're good? Alright. Yes, sir.
Too bad it's quick.
No, you're good, you were next, I was fixing the call when I said.
Look, I wanted to bring you up to date, through our last year of appropriations, we were able to obtain more mobile radios for the statewide system, including that was the City of Stark Fire Department, so those will be coming hopefully in the next couple of months, we're trying to stay updated with the fire department stuff, to get them updated, and we are approaching another appropriations to finish up anything, like, add a new tower for the area with the state. So we're working on those appropriations to keep the system working, it's, we just finally got updated to what the City of Stark already have, so all the fire department, sheriff's office, we're all on the same network, same system, so I just wanted to update you with that, that's coming, those are about fifty-eight hundred dollars a piece, so it's good, nearly a million other, million dollar appropriations, so. Good to our, to Chip Brandon, and to Ms. Bradley, they have called home for us the last three years, we located the comm center for nearly a million dollars, the affordability, now we're doing the moles, good update, then we get these towers and stuff, and update meeting, we got that hanging, to update all licenses, but that's for me, another million dollars, so, that's what we're pushing for from the sheriff's office side. Number two is, is something that's, it's hard to discuss, and, and I can tell you the individual would not like to discuss publicly. However, out of the kindness and what he's meant to our community, and to me, as a personal friend, Gil Duge, all you'll know this will be out there, it's not a GoFundMe page, it is a page built up by the Florida Deputy Sheriff's Association, which now has over twenty-six thousand deputy sheriff membership, just brought them on, I actually, in a few trips, I was able to bring them on, huge, huge burst to our deputy sheriff, they've created a link, you'll see us posting it, you'll see a food train that's going out, was diagnosed, it's one of those things, you need access, a coworker could, not only your friend, but works with you, each every day, to have, to make them go to the doctor, unfortunately, it was the worst that you could possibly have, it is cancer, I'm doing this out of abundance of, so the rumors aren't out there, my phone's sitting there, there are probably fifteen, twenty calls, if the word's out, people are asking what they can do, you'll see us in the coming days, there are people that wanna cook, there are people that wanna take food, there are people that just wanna give money, we're gonna try to streamline into that for him and his family, and the biggest asset I have is prayer. It's in God's hands, it'll be His will, I can tell you that, you know, Gil Duge is a very humble man, he did not ask, his wife would not ask, his son would not ask, it's, it's hit all of a sudden, this happened within the last few days, and you'll see us reaching out to do some fundraising benefits, because she's not gonna be able to work, he is an employee of ours, never using his sick leave, if any employees has got it, he's not, haven't asked anybody, we don't have, we don't know, we don't know the term of this, y'all, don't know what the outcome is, still in the beginning phases, he's in his second day of treatment, they went, started the treatment, so, it's, 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 it's hard, it's, it's emotional, please, prayers, and support you give to him and his family, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And that brings up something with you saying that about Gil Duge, I got some bad news this week, if anybody's familiar with Ms. Norma Dawn's daughter, Kelly, she got a bad diagnosis of cancer in the head and exercise to her brain, so, she's a single mom, her daughter has found a benefit, so just keep those families in our prayers, you know, she's only forty-three years old, I think. It's, you know, God's word tells us that it's, it's not really, you know, it can rain on you one day and shine on you the next, and it's up to Him, that's what happens, but it's all for His glory. With that being said, again, keep them in your prayers, the other thing that I had was, I'm gonna be traveling to Roatan, Honduras, with a legislative delegation coming up on October second, so keep me in your thoughts and prayers as I travel, going elsewhere, but this is to a charter city, it's an economic development zone, so to learn about the charter city of prosperous, so hopefully I can come back with some good knowledge there, and good connections for us, and as you talked about the appropriations for, you know, Representative Brandon and Bradley, when you look at their numbers, and what was brought in for our area and our region, it's astronomical, it's alive by the places, and so, they are, they are out there working for us, and then maintain those relationships with them, and continue to extend our appreciation, and for what they're doing in our community, so, with that being said, if you have that to me?
I will, hopefully, unless I end up kidnapped or something.
Okay, Sheriff, isn't there an appropriations meeting with them that's coming up?
October.
Twenty twenty-third. October twenty-third, and ten at the courthouse. What she said?
What she said.
Twenty-third, twenty. So that, that's the time we, we need to have.
Remember legislative sessions are early this year.
Yeah, we think that's.
It's maybe like, kind of, you gotta.
Yeah, Friday, morning meeting, correct?
It is ten o'clock, ten, yeah.
One last thing. I can, you guys can remind me of. I know, I probably don't need to bring any back, they've been all that stuff. So Captain Mueller, you have worked diligently over the last couple of months on Cherry Street, and we got proper signage in place, Captain Mueller's spent a lot of time out there, and I've been thankful to citizens' complaints and needs, and cooperates with the city, and all of our fellow businesses and all that stuff, how is that, how's that working out?
It's working great, sir, as you said, got the signs up, we want to protect that route, as y'all do, and we're trying to give you some place to, drivers that do use that route, or out of the river, in that area, there are not complaining, to my knowledge, Doctor Bell?
I haven't heard him.
Right?
I think they're looking a lot better. They think you're looking a lot better.
Alright. I would leave the members of them.
No, I said two, you saw me. I do have a question, Captain Mueller, Sheriff, about those people that do boot drives outside of the city limits, I think it was last weekend, I saw somebody that was out at the Walmart intersection there, doing a boot drive, it was some guys that had the buckets, and, and I know it's outside of our, our jurisdiction, but do you, how, does the county have?
We would maintain that, we would, yes, we maintain safety there, that would be a safety issue.
Okay, because, because in the city, they have to have, they have to have approval.
They have to, they have to have approval, not whether anybody's coming for a commission, I, I won't.
You're talking about the county, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there, there was somebody out there last weekend.
Seize the bucket. We'll be supplying, seize the bucket.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware, but yeah, I'm glad you're aware, that's something I didn't know.
Yeah, that, that's always my, and I don't know why I'm always, I'm the one that always catch these people, I see them everywhere.
Maybe you got plenty of money, they go.
Yeah, I don't give a money, I talk to my.
But you're, I, I watch all the commissioners, I'm up there, I'm watching, so.
Alright, very last thing, have we had any word on the safer grant? Okay. Hopefully we get this for our fire department's safer grant, for that position, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay, wait, wait, one more. No, no, I just wanted clarification, so as far as the charter review, next meeting, we're to bring a recommendation, one each, from our district, so that we can decide who's gonna do what, and then we'll go forward.
Definitely, and, and be prepared for some discussion too, because as Mr. Walker said, on that number of people, five to seven, my recommendation's gonna be is we have two staff members, and then those other five members, which would make up seven, and we try to have a member from each district.
Okay, five staff members, or that doesn't.
No, no, not five staff members, two staff members.
Two staff members, and the clerk, and the clerk, what you recommend, what we got?
Will she be a leading member of the clerk, or she would be the record?
Just there.
Not, not, okay, go, okay. I have, nothing else.
Alright, meeting's adjourned.